Make sure you do that.
Oh, good. Yeah, all right, good.
Five, four, three, two, one.
Good evening. Tonight is March thirteenth. This is the Ashland School Committee meeting. We start each meeting with a reading of our vision statement, which is the Ashland Public Schools strives to be a model district that creates a culture of inclusivity for our diverse students and staff who feel safe and supported, are empowered with the academic and social emotional skills to pursue their chosen path and embrace their roles as positive contributors to local and global communities. Our order of business for this evening is going to be the review of the agenda and adoption, which I've just covered, or I'll be covering now. Public comment, if there is any, administrative items, student recognition, overnight travel requests for Europe of April twenty twenty five with Mr. McGann, and FY twenty four financial update and budget transfers, and assistant superintendent's update, including some student data analysis, the assistant superintendent's up, I'm sorry, superintendent's update, warrant approvals, gifts and donations, acceptance of minutes from February fourteenth and February twenty eighth, any member updates, and then some action items, and then we will go into executive session to talk about collective bargaining with regard to our education support personnel. So let me just start with the, the, the agenda, make sure everybody's okay with the agenda for this evening. Marcy?
Aye, yes.
Tina?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, hi for me. So the first item on the agenda is public comment. Do we have anybody here in person or on Zoom that is here for public comment?
Anyone on Zoom, just use the raise hand feature.
Public comment going once, twice?
Do not see anybody.
I'm not seeing anybody. Okay, thank you. First item, student recognition. Mr. Adams?
Great, thank you. And I don't know if the audience can see the folks who are in the room with us today, but it gives me great pleasure to, to welcome the Ashland wrestling team here tonight and, and spend a few minutes just to recognize the outstanding season that y'all have had and, and for seniors too, for the, the great four years of, of work that you've put in. And as Mr. Zakili and I were talking, the, the records that were set this year were amazing and number, numerous with not only individual but from a team standpoint. And I want to share a little bit of that. Pre-COVID, we used to have a lot of time where we would bring students in and, and recognize the great accomplishments, not only athletics but academics, music, drama, et cetera. And, and I feel like we need to get back to be doing those things because we do have some phenomenal students in our district and who are doing wonderful things. So thank you for taking the time. We won't keep you here very late, just a few minutes of your time, if you will. So I just want to highlight some of the things this year. So records, most sectional finalists in program history, we had nine. Highest mixed gender finish in the state school history of second place, phenomenal. Highest girls finished in all states in school history, second. First New England champion since nineteen eighty-five, Nora Quitt, congratulations. And we'll continue on that, the first triple crown champion, so states, all states and New England's since nineteen eighty-five as well with Nora. And, and I think it's, you know, I, I look at wrestling and I look at all the different sectionals that you have to go through. So there's a lot of time and effort and to, to win each one of those is, is quite amazing. And I remember you're looking at nationals as well coming up, so it's hopefully perform well there and bring back that title as well. But from a school, all sports records, the class of twenty twenty-four, won three league titles and three district titles. First ever in any sport that we've, that we've had here in Ashland. Four individual state championship champions this year, so Nora, Angie Nami, Adrian Guzman and Anton Puhash. So tremendous work on that. State best, most points in the state sectionals, two hundred ninety-one and a half points, two thousand twenty-four, most all-state qualifiers, eleven. And as we stated before, first ever division three girl state champions and the combined girls state qualifiers and gender, mixed gender state qualifiers and mixed gender girls points at state. So great work. You know, as I said to Mr. Zakili today when we were meeting, it's, it's been awesome to see the development of the program. And from going from a co-ed or a co-op program and, and to individual having just Ashland is a testament to the folks who came before you, but your work as well in getting this program up and running and succeeding. So thank you so much for, for being here and thank you for all the work you do in representing Ashland first class. And that's people who talk to me about our programs, talk about how classy the Ashland athletes are. And it's certainly, you know, with the wrestling program is top-notch. So thank you.
So I'll just add a little bit of that. So, I mean, I want to add my congratulations to all of you. I mean, every one of you has competed. As most of you know, I've seen a lot of it firsthand. And, you know, you've all put in such a tremendous amount of work to achieve the success that you've had, both individually and as a team. And the way you've represented Ashland has been stellar. I also wanted to just acknowledge the coaches, and you have probably as many coaches as you have athletes, who've put in a tremendous amount of time to make the program what it is, to support each of you. And if you haven't already, take the opportunity to thank them at some point along the way for, for all their support. Certainly you have our support and thank you all for being here. Anybody?
I mean, the most important thing for me is, you know, what Mr. Adams said about how you represent yourself in, in Ashland. So the success is great, but when you do it the right way and you represent yourself and us well, that's, that's even better. So congratulations and thank you.
Congratulations. You guys have done an amazing job, not only for yourselves, but for all the students coming up behind you because you've created the bedrock of a really incredible program. Obviously the coaches, but also the student athletes. You guys have set an example for those coming up behind you and you should be really proud of yourselves.
Marcy, thanks.
So I think, I'd like to end it by just saying, I, I don't know if you heard Mr. Terry Reed. I think you may have heard him, I don't know if you were listening, but our vision statement. And I think it's really critically important, especially with our student athletes, to, to just listen to this for a second. We strive to be a model district that creates a culture of inclusivity for our diverse students and staff. And I'm going to read the last piece that embrace their roles as positive contributors to local and global communities. And that's what I talk about when you're representing us, your community, your families, one another, out, outside of, you know, the town limits, you do that so well. And so thank you so much for that. You are and do embody what that vision statement clearly means to us in the district. So thank you.
And for those at home, I wish the camera was on you so that they could all see you in your matching t-shirts and, and everything showing well.
They should just walk.
Walk in front of them. So, and that was it. Thank you, Mr. Zakili.
Thanks, everybody for coming in. Congratulations again.
Thank you. Thank you. Of course. Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, if we've got a picture of that, how do we get this on camera? I don't know, normally we have that. Yeah, get a picture of Mike out there.
Okay, I'm gonna fix, I'm gonna fix you everybody.
Yeah, that'd be great. Then we can have.
Do, do it right on the front stair, on the, on the stairs.
Yeah, right on the stairs. It'd be perfect. Thanks.
Thanks.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
All right.
We don't need Mike for this one.
Yeah, so while, while the photo is going on outside, next item on the agenda is overnight travel request for Europe, April twenty twenty five, from Corey McGann. Mr. McGann?
Yes, it's great.
Okay, great, thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm Corey McGann, school counselor at Ashland High School. I've been doing the trips to Europe usually every other year, going back to when I started at Ashland. The trip that I want to do for next year is starting in Switzerland, going down to Italy and then over to France and Spain. I always try to mix it up and, but I always try to incorporate France and Spain because we've got kids learning French, we've got kids learning Spanish. So just, they always, they always go into it thinking that they, they know more than they realize they do. And then they come back all excited like, I spoke. But it gets them to learn how to travel, learn other cultures, they grow as people, they connect with each other really strongly. And I just think it's such a huge vital thing for them to, to see the world in a safe way.
Any questions for Mr. McGann?
Not necessarily. And I, I think I love these trips. I think they're great for the kids. I think they're incredible opportunities to offer. You know, one thing, usually Paul brings this up as well too, but in terms of, you know, the financing, obviously these aren't cheap trips.
Yeah.
Right? And so in terms of making the opportunity accessible to all students, what does that look like? So that's my first question. You may be able to answer these all at the same time.
Sure.
And then the second question is, you know, what does the rollout look like? I know in the past couple of years, there's been such an, an enormous desire to go on these trips. A lot of kids have been, you know, showing up to the info sessions, a lot of families, a lot of kids have been signing up for the trips. And I think there's a, a perception that you have to sign up right away or you're going to lose a spot. So it's felt a little bit like the Hunger Games to parents. Like you have to make a decision right now and sign up, right? And it's obviously a big commitment with the financial piece. So, you know, kind of those two pieces, how will we, how can we make it accessible to all students? And then what will the rollout look like in signing up?
And if I could just piggyback on it, because I had the experience last year of trying it. So maybe, you know, you can address if there's any changes you plan on making. Last year, there was an info session.
Yes.
That seemed to be optional, but it really wasn't optional because at that, you know, at that info session, you learn that immediately after the info session is when it opened up.
Right.
And it was actually during a school committee meeting, so I couldn't be there and my wife was also occupied. So my daughter went with somebody, with a friend and her, her mother. So we weren't able to get on in time and do that. And so to couple that with the, with the equity piece, and, and we talked about that last year, how can we improve on that so that, that, that everybody gets that, that fair shot, right?
So I've already made some changes, especially to last year. All right. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna answer the second part first and then I'll come back to the first one. So the information session that I had for the trip that's happening in April, in, in a month, that was two years ago. And I, I advertised as I usually did, I had it in the same exact location as I always did. When I showed up, I had planned for, you know, I was doing the library. Three times as many people showed up at that information session than I had ever had before. So something occurred that changed the desire to travel.
COVID?
Right, I was just gonna say that, yeah.
Yes, that's definitely a piece of it. So that caught me off guard. At the same time, I, I definitely don't like to take more than, I always want to fit in one contained bus. I think there, problems happen if you expand so much and go onto two buses and just add more chaperones and more of this, more of that. Safety always has to come first for me and I start to get, I mean, I don't sleep properly on these trips anyway. It, it becomes a tipping point of things can go wrong. I like to keep it in. And every time we get on that bus, I want every single person hearing my voice so that when I'm giving instructions, it's clear on what's happening. So that was one of the reasons why instead of doing it every other year, I realized like every year might need to happen in order to make sure that we can satisfy the demand that I'm now currently seeing. Because back when I started in twenty ten, every other year, and I wouldn't, generally I didn't max out.
Probably wouldn't even fill a bus, yeah.
I'd get, I'd get third, and I'd fill a bus. I'd get up to thirty, thirty-four, thirty-five. But I never would like be capped and so quickly. So doing it every year is going to help part of that. The other thing is rolling it out where the, the first week, it's the rising seniors that can, that can, that can sign up. And the sign up is a ninety-five dollar refundable deposit. So you sign up, but then you change your mind, you can, you can, you know, drop out. Rising seniors, first dibs for a week, and then I'll send the link to rising juniors and then rising sophomores. Just to make sure that from a access standpoint, if you didn't, aren't able to go as a sophomore, you'll have a shot at junior, if not sophomore, junior, and then senior.
I just asked on that point, is there any prohibition on somebody trying to go as a freshman, a sophomore, junior? Like if you go once, you can't go a second time, or is that not been in this year?
I've never, I've never, I've never run into that, so I've never had to, I can't even think if I have had a student that's gone. I've had siblings go, but I can't remember if I had, but, but I've never, I've never run into this kind of demand before, so I've never had to.
The past couple of years, there've been a lot of underclassmen on the trips, which is great. I have no problem with it.
Right.
But kind of in thinking through who gets first dibs, also potentially thinking who's already gone on a trip. So if it's a student who's already had the opportunity to maybe last year go to Italy, this year is it London and Paris and Madrid?
Yeah, and April would go to London.
Right. And I know that there are some sophomores going on this year's trip, as current sophomores going on this year. So just kind of thinking through.
I have no issue with putting that in place if that's.
I, I think that that would be the fair way to do it, to be honest with you. Yeah.
I think, and not, I'm not one that likes to micromanage processes.
Right.
But I think communicating that out when people are first looking at it. So as an example, my daughter's one of the people who's going next month as a sophomore. Maybe if, when we went to the first info session that was communicated, she might've had to have the conversation in her head or with us about, well, would I rather think about doing a junior year?
Right.
I don't know that we ever had the thought that she'd do it more than once because we might not support that, right? It's, it is expensive. But it seems like integrating that concept in might cause some people to think a little bit about it, at least in terms of priority for getting.
And I think it's not saying, well, you can't do it. It's only if, if everybody has had a chance to sign up and then there's still room, then you could, you know. It doesn't necessarily prevent them, but it does allow for other students who haven't been able to go.
Right, just to spread the opportunity as far as possible. Yeah, I think that would be.
Which I think is ideal, for sure, for sure.
Yeah.
And, and also if, if you could have the information session and then a gap between that and sign up. Because like I said, that caught us off guard, but also, you know, we, we talked last year, how do you get the students who look at that number and like, my parents never be able to do that? How do you at least get them in there and then maybe ha- have them at the information and then have enough of a gap to work out the process of how to? Because it's also daunting, okay, ninety-five dollars, because it's, it's not your process, it's the.
Right.
It, it's, it's the, it's the consultants or whatever, whatever system, right? And so it's not built for that. And so, you know, if there's a way to, because that seems daunting to someone who might need financial assistance.
For sure.
It's only ninety-five dollars. I'm like, what if it? And, and we, we looked at it and it was, it wasn't as clear as, as, as it, it is probably easy as, as far as what it, what it effectively will be.
Right.
But when you look at it, it's like, what am I signing up for? When what?
Yeah.
When is it not, when I want to, when will I get this back? And, and it can be daunting for that. So if, if there's some way to, to have, be able to have more of a, of a process ahead of that, that for anyone that, you know, we want to, we want to see that there's assistance, there, there's time for that as well.
Okay.
Just, just a suggestion, you know. I'm, I'm with him. I don't want to micromanage.
Agreed, yeah.
But that's what we experienced last year.
Sure.
And totally.
That's good feedback for me to have.
Totally gave us a surprise here. And we, I know we, we exchanged emails and so.
I cannot stress enough, it was bonkers. I, I remember I was texting with Ms. Shields. I, I was, because she's been to my information sessions, I said, you will not believe how many people are here. I cannot believe this. And it really caught me off guard because you don't, I don't have people sign up ahead of time for the information session. It's, it's common. And certainly it, it hasn't been a requirement. I've had kids that have not attended the information session, come see me the next day, get the information and sign. I've never run, run into that kind of problem before, so I learned, I learned my lesson. But it, it had shifted so quickly that I, I, I did not expect it.
I'm not trying to harp on that, just to just improve on it.
So the other thing, I think that a lot of schools, I won't say most schools, but I think a lot of schools, they roll it out for, for April break trip, they'll roll it out at the very beginning of the school year in September and have their information set and all that. I purposely, I keep hitting the microphone, so I apologize to everybody that's listening. I purposely do it before the summertime because I want to build in, and, and actually in future, I actually want to back this up more. So it gives more time for families to be able to chip away at it, for students to get a summer job, to chip away at it, to fundraise, to do things that they can do to make it more accessible. Rather than just September, there's a information session and we're leaving in April and you got to be able to have all that money upfront. That's really hard for families. I know EF gives scholarships. I know that they, one of the best things that I think EF does is they actually create for the kids to use. It's kind of like a GoFundMe link where they can share it with family members, friends, whomever, to do fundraising that way, just to like have people contribute to their, their trip, so. But the earlier they can know about it, the more they can, so this is actually like late for me because usually I do it every two years and I'm like, it's two years before we go. So all the London, Paris, Madrid kids that are go, like, they've been on for a long time. So I'm okay doing it every year, but what I'm going to do is back up the approval process. So, you know, you'll be seeing me earlier in the year to say, it's not for this April, but it's for the next April. But that way people can chip away at it because it's tough.
Can you talk about the, the scholarship component and what we're able to do to support kids who even with, you know, the, the most advanced lead time, aren't able to afford the trip? That's always, one of the things we worry about is right, the equity, equitable access piece. Never mind the procedural stuff that we kind of talked about. But you talk about what we're able to do and, and how confident you are that we're communicating the opportunity to go and what funding opportunities might be there for those who can't afford it.
So when I advertise it, I say if any, if any families have any, are interested but have financial issues, come see me. At the information session, I always reiterate that as well. So there's opportunities for family to come see me to, to, you know, I, I can't guarantee anything because A, I don't know how many families are going to come forward and B, how much money is at our disposal. I know the high school has a fund that has a little bit of money in it. You know, it, it can always use more, but, but we, we make sure that, you know, if they're interested, they can have a conversation with us to see sort of, okay, where, where do we need to meet you at?
And are, are you getting enough kids coming forward and talking to you or exploring that to feel confident that we're, that message is being received? Because I, I'm guessing there would be a number of kids who would say, like, they wouldn't even think about it, right? They just see the, like, oh, Europe, I can't never afford to go, and then that's the end of it. Like, and I'm hoping that, you tell me, now every year I got like four or five kids that come forward and.
I don't get that.
Okay.
I don't get that.
The other thing I'd just add to that is if we are thinking about equity, getting a passport and how you do that and like aiding someone through that, if, if accessibility is an issue, like that would be something maybe to bring. I know it's a parent responsibility, but.
No, I absolutely help with that and I communicate sort of the steps, provide the state department link and let families know if you have any questions. Yeah, that, all that, like the travel piece of like how to do this, I walk all the families through that.
My, my son went on the Italy trip last year, so EF, the, the travel company also does that. So you get lots of reminders, both from the school and from the company. I mean, they don't do it for you, but it's kind of, here's the steps to take.
They've got a, they've got a hotline that families can call and literally ask any question and they will, they, they bend over backwards for that stuff. It's, they're really good about that.
That's great. So, so Jim, maybe the work that Christie's doing and, and, and all the different other ways we're trying to outreach to all, all the different groups and demographics, maybe, you know, kind of share this with them and see, you know, have them look at it, see if there's a way that, you know, and you might be doing every, you know, you might be doing everything you can. So, and, but, you know, we can always try to do more and, and because if we're not getting any, you know, I would just think that at some point we should, there, there would be interest if the financial piece wasn't there, so. And I have confidence if we're backing up far enough that if, if we said to the community that we have a couple of students that want to go on a trip, that I, I have no doubt that we could, that the community would come and, and help if needed.
Especially if we, if we were able to identify those kids, get them signed up, they get that GoFundMe link. If we shared that out, you know, maybe even anonymously, people would donate to that, so.
Okay, any other questions from Mr. McGann? If not, is there a motion to approve the overnight travel request for Europe, April twenty twenty five?
So moved.
Your second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope. Have a great trip in twenty twenty five.
Twenty twenty five.
And have a good trip this April as well.
A couple of wrestling kids are coming to make sales.
Good.
That's great.
Tell them that's not the time to wrestle.
Yeah, right.
We'll keep them under control.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Corey. All right.
I'm going on that trip just waiting.
You're going on the one this April?
I didn't approve that part.
The LPM.
I'll keep my daughter in line then.
I've got my group already.
Next item on the agenda, FY twenty four financial update and budget transfers. I assume we're looking to Chris on this?
We are. I'm just gonna, I'll just preface it here. I just want to make sure my screen is being shared here. Chris, I think this is the one you sent me today. I, I just want to, Chris will walk us through this, but as, as we approach the end of, believe it or not, fiscal year twenty-four and, and turn to fiscal year twenty-five in our budget conversations this weekend for the budget workshop, which is taking place at the David Mindo School, folks, just so we're clear, where we.
At the middle school.
At, no, and not at the middle school.
Thank you for the reminder.
It's in the music, it's in the music room. It starts at eight-thirty. So as we go through a, a school year and our operating budget that was approved at a town meeting, quite often we might have a variety of expenses that we expected throughout the year, salaries, for instance, which is eighty-plus percent of our, of our budget, where we don't fill positions. And/or we might have, for instance, special education, out-of-district costs that we anticipated that may not come to fruition. Or we bring students back into the district partway through the year, so there's a savings there. So when we go through the process of looking at our line items and, and Chris will walk through, walk this, walk you through this, we have relied upon our revolving accounts to, to balance our budgets. Every year we do that. So last year it was pretty significant to balance FY twenty-four budget. So as we go through the process, we want to make sure that the board is fully aware that instead of using all of those revolving funds, we can offset it to the actual operating expense account lines. So those funds, revolving funds can move forward to use in the next fiscal year. Okay? So Chris, if you wanted to explain the chart here and what, what this means. And this chart will look familiar, hopefully on the weekend. I wanted it to be consistent with our approach. So this is a chart that we've shown for years in my budget book, but also in the budget workshop. These are our major categories. Turn it over to you, Chris. Make sure you're green.
Yep, it's on. Thank you. So what you see here is the general funds budget. On the far right, you'll see an available budget. It's one point nine million dollars. That, that's funds that have not been committed at this time, or at least not financially recognized on our ledger yet. The request right now is pretty much what Jim just summarized to alleviate some of the expenditures within our revolving accounts and move them over to the general fund. And I can speak specifically to that. Um, there are one, two, three, four, five different requests. Um, first one is we had a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars set aside for international tuition, um, that fund, which is salary related. Instead of expended, expending the international tuition revolving account, would like to move that into the general fund.
What does that pay for typically, international tuition?
Right now, it's, it's two teachers. It's two educators.
Definitely, we're looking for teachers.
Oh, okay.
We, and that fund more or less.
So it's their salaries?
Yes.
Okay. I'm just confused by the, the title of it. That's all.
It's, well, you know what it was? In the, in the past, we used to have revenue coming in for agreements that we had with international students and things of that nature.
Yeah, I don't know if you recall, I think we did it since season on.
As I said, maybe four times.
We, we set the tuition rate each year. Now, th- this year I don't think we had.
We haven't yet, yeah, we haven't had.
Yeah, but, but I think it was, it was like twelve thousand something.
Twelve, yeah, twelve-five or something.
Uh, and so that's, that tuition goes into this revolving account.
So this is, is, we're just seeking to move money out of this into the other one?
Well, so it's, and correct me if I'm wrong, Chris. When we passed the budget, it included utilizing a hundred and sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars from the revolving account, uh, to balance the budget when we approved the budget.
For this year.
At this point, we're looking not to use that and keep it in. So that reclassing is keeping, is keeping it back into, uh.
I'm not a finance person, so just wanna make sure that reclassing, move it from one account to another. That's okay.
So, so, hold on, hold on, one at a time.
Year over year, general fund is what's, um, provided, um, once per year.
Okay. Just getting all my funds.
The benefit of the revolving account is if we freed up, we can use it again next year. This particular account, we haven't had revenue in it in,
In the general fund?
Uh, in the revolving account. We have not had revenue going into that in at least three years, probably.
Yep, since COVID.
Marcie, you, you're familiar with revolving accounts? I don't know if you deal with them in your work or?
Different names, but yeah, that's why I'm just trying to connect the terminology.
It's a purpose-specific fund. Money comes in and money that's used out of that should be used for the same purpose or tied to it. So if we have like building rentals that come in, we use that money to support things that kind of offset the cost of building rental.
Revolving accounts typically are fee, fees go into it, uh, generally.
So it'd be bussing.
And our, and our general fund is, is a standard municipal fund that has to be expended within the fiscal year. And if it's not, it goes to free cash. So these allow for rollover. So there's a benefit to keeping the funds in there because then we'll have them for next year where, uh, if we left it in the general fund and there was a surplus, it just goes to free cash. So.
So Chris, let me ask a question on this, one that we're talking about the international tuition. So if I understand it right, um, there's, there's money that we're going to use out of the international tuition revolving account to cover some of the budgetary costs we had this year. We don't, we're now in a position where we don't have to do that. And maybe it's just the way this is phrased, but I'm reading it. It says, request reclass international tuition of one sixty-two to the general fund. And that makes it sound to me like we're still moving it from revolving to general, where I think what you're saying is what was in general is actually not gonna be expended and that the money is gonna stay in the revolving account.
It's reclassifying the, the money as general fund and not.
Well, if you, but if you do that, I think what you're ultimately doing is instead of being able to maintain in the revolving account and you move in the general fund, if we don't expend it by the end of the year for some purpose, would it not return to free cash to the town?
No, and what I'm saying is, it just, it's oddly phrased. It's talking about the money, reclassifying the money to come from the general fund. So you're, so you're tagging that money as general fund and not that.
Correct. I wanna get it out of international tuition, move it over to expend the general fund. So it's reclassing international tuition.
Spend that's coming from here.
Bringing it over to general fund.
Okay. And.
It's, it's, it's tough to break.
Okay. So I think, I think I'm following what you're saying is that the revolving account funds in the amount of a hundred and sixty-two plus or minus are being moved from that revolving account to the general fund.
The expenditure, correct.
The expenditure of funds.
The anticipated or the actual expenditure. We're not gonna expense the, uh, international tuition. We're going to expense, um,
Okay. So the two teachers that you're talking about that we would have funded, we're gonna charge that to the general fund rather than.
That's correct.
Correct. All of these are gonna be the same.
And it's all consistent. So that methodology is used.
It's odd word, but yeah.
No, that's why I just, that's.
Conceptually, well done, Mr. Terry.
I, sometimes, you know, you always wanna be able to answer this question when somebody says, why are you doing that?
Yeah, no, that's, and this is part of the reason why I, I wanted Chris to bring this to the board. Because these are significant numbers. I might not bring it to you if it was a ten thousand dollar adjustment from a revolving account into the general fund. But these are significant funds that we are going to be expending in FY twenty-five. So I wanted, obviously, the board approval on this. So.
Not, not flipping, sorry, I know you were talking about flipping in between funds, but on the year-to-date expended, what year, what month, year-end is the?
So that's the year-to-date.
I know, but through what month? February close?
The year-to-date expended would be through today.
Today, okay.
Yeah, that's, that's real time. That, that was, those financials were around this morning.
Oh, it's a whole different world here. Okay.
Oh, yeah.
I can, I can have month-by-month close. We can do that.
No, I was just curious. Okay.
Ask them now. It's either changed.
It probably has changed. Not materialized.
Okay, okay. Through today. I got you. Okay.
All right, sorry.
So just continuing down that same thought process, school bus revolving, we had anticipated five hundred and thirty K. Same, same concept. We'd like to move that over to the general fund.
Okay.
Building rental, a little bit smaller of a dollar, but it's eighty K.
Are, are all of these the same? Because those don't say to general fund. Are, are you, are you doing the same things?
To general fund. That, that's me going too quickly. So I apologize.
I, I, I saw that before and I'm like, is, are they doing something different with those three?
No, no, it's just.
I should've caught that.
Yep.
But yes, the concept is, is the same.
All right, just because I'm still catching up here, because I don't understand, I don't understand finance the same way that all of you do. Just to make sure that I understand this correctly. In essence, we were originally going to be taking money from the school bus revolving account to pay for something, and we no longer have to do that. The general fund is gonna pay for those things. But we have to, we have to state that in the budget where the money's coming from. So that's what these changes are gonna do.
Well, I don't even know if, this is more for Jim and Policy and, and you. I don't know necessarily if we even need to, this is just a, more of a healthy conversation to make sure that we're being fully transparent on what we're doing.
Right, right, right.
You know, so, you know, opposed to me just doing journal entries and freeing up.
But in essence, these, these expenses don't need to be paid from the account we originally thought they would be paid for. So we're just clarifying where the money's coming and going.
Correct. So, so, so when we go before town meeting, right, we're asking for the forty million, two hundred and eleven thousand, six hundred and nine dollars as our operating budget. That's not truly our operating budget, right? I mean, we, we have used all of these revolving amounts, okay? You could generally just add to this operating because we need more money to actually satisfy our costs. It just doesn't show that in the operating money that we asked for the town. So now we're saying of that forty million, two hundred and eleven, these things that we were, make it forty-two million dollar budget, we don't need that extra two million dollars of the revolving accounts to make it balanced.
Make ends meet, yeah.
Right. So this is what we're doing. It's just saying, hey, we wanna be able to use this money in the future years. So anything we were, had planned on using the revolving for can actually be absorbed within the operating budget that was approved at town meeting.
Okay, perfect. Because you got, like, so for instance, sorry to cut you off. So for like the bus revolving, you got enough fees to cover that, and you didn't think?
No.
It's not even that.
I'll just do a private session.
No, 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 no. It's a great question.
Okay.
What it is, it's operating savings that we have in other areas that we're able to offset revolving account expenditures.
So, Marcie, think of it this way. So let's, let's assume we had a million dollars in salary savings, right?
Why don't you explain where salary savings might come from to start?
Uh, okay. So it could come from.
I, I get that. I'm good with that.
A variety of not filling positions, whatever.
I get all that.
Yeah. So that being said.
Yep.
We didn't anticipate those savings.
Yep.
Right? So we were gonna have to use building rent, uh, uh, using the bus, the bus revolving to, to make sure all of the bus expenditures, um, balanced. But because we had savings in salaries, we're just gonna transfer from a salary line to the transportation line that amount of money. So now we don't have to use a revolving account.
I got you. Okay.
Just adjusting, it's really just adjusting entries for us, but.
It, it'll make more sense next year because it, this time last year when we have the budget workshops and we go through the, the budget hearing, we talk about how.
I get, I, I get. I just, I'm used to see revenue, expense, net.
Yeah, we have no revenues.
Well, whatever. I, 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 I get it. I get it. I just, different terminology.
Conversation, we were going to use this much of these. We, we no longer need to.
I got you.
Yeah. So I was just gonna speak to Chris, your point about whether or not we even really need to vote on anything. And I, I think when we go through the budget here, when we approve the budget, we don't really talk about the source. Um, but it probably, at least in my view, is healthy for this committee, um, to be approving any material transfers. You know, I think Jim's right. If it's, if it's a nominal amount and we can figure out what that ought to be, like, I don't know that we need anything more than a reporting on it once a quarter. But I think for the, the volume of money that's involved here, um, you know, we made a lot of policy level decisions based on what we thought numbers would look like. And, um, you know, that these kind of numbers could cause somebody to say, geez, if you've got that, why don't we do X, Y, or Z in, in some fashion? And, and I think we should probably give some thought to that. And it's certainly not a conversation we should be having right now, but uh, maybe over the summer, looking at some of the, sort of the financial practices we have and, and refreshing ourselves on, on what those ought to be.
Yeah, I think, I think we've done, like, last year, we had similar discussions, right? I mean, it's.
Yeah. Yeah, it, it's definitely a summertime thing. I mean, when we're talking about, th- these are savings that allow us not to dip into using these, these funds. I probably say, great, that just means we're, we have a, a, a little bit of a, a little bit of a cushion. We're kicking the can.
Kicking down the road, right?
So I, I wouldn't say, hey, we can do that unless it would have to be something very important.
But I can see how maybe somebody listening to this conversation or somebody from the outside is gonna say, well, if you have all that extra money, why aren't we doing the things that are on our punch list, right? Why aren't you doing other things that we want when we already committed to using those, the funds that were there? So I think it makes sense to just think through our own policy in terms of how we, whether we, you know, I don't know that we need to, like you said, vote on or approve them, but just kind of how we, you know.
And, and how, and how we communicate that, right?
Right, right, right.
We talk about it, uh, when we do the budget cycle, that dipping in in these ways is not sustainable.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
So, I have a question for you.
Yep, um, school choice, uh, the, one of the larger, um, categories that we have is school choice. Requesting to move that fund, uh, utilize the general fund, free up our school choice funding, um, six hundred K. And the last one is more kind of, not so much, um, punch list items at the, at the highest level, but punch list items at, at a facilities level, um, to utilize sixty-seven thousand in, I don't wanna say miscellaneous, because, you know, some of them are larger. Um, but miscellaneous facilities requests that are, you know, that are necessary. You know, just looking to move forward with those.
So. Do you tell the kids, Akili, if they win the championship, you give them a new mat?
It's already on the list. So, but.
That's our, our.
So, so just question, i- is it a typo or?
Yeah, yeah, Paul, I, I saw the same thing. So the thirty-seven below, the detail, we added, right, so the thirty thousand, um, for the gym dividers was added this afternoon. It didn't get added to the top, which was sixty-seven. That, that's the.
The, the last line says thirty-seven detail below.
The sixty, because we added the thirty, Chris, after we had a conversation. So.
No, that, that's fine. I just didn't know if those were already planned expenditures or.
Correct. It's, it's, I added the gym dividers because they came in.
Yep, yeah, no worries. Yep. But those were, so just, so we're clear, those sixty-seven thousand dollars of items would have been on, on FY twenty-five's punch list budget items, if you will. But we've got an opportunity to, there are certain things we can get in advance. We can't, we can't pay for, um, services for next year with this year's money.
Were any of these on your twenty-four list that you originally had last year at the budget?
Yeah.
So as we look at, you know, even the, the bottom number there, right, the favorable, favorable variance after recommended adjustments, um, there's one point one million there. And, yeah, I don't think we typically end a year with a, what would have turned back to the town as a favorable number. So what, what does this represent in terms of like where we are year-to-date compared to where we historically are year-to-date? And, you know, what, what do we end up incurring as unexpected costs or what have you that, that money might, might go to?
Sure. There, there are a number of variables that that one point one million can, can, can swing. I mean, utilities alone can, uh, can come up, uh, some of the out-of-district expenditures can come up, any one-time needs. I mean, just thinking over the past month when we needed, uh, you know, generators and.
Boilers.
Boilers. I mean, things, we're comfortable enough right now where that is, you know, we're in a good position right now where I'm not nervous by making this recommendation.
So, so, Chris, can I just ask, so the bottom line up there on the top is one point nine?
Yep.
Yeah.
You, that, but you.
How do I get to the one point one?
Yeah, so.
So over to the right?
Because, because the top three are, are already accounted for there and it's just the, the, the six hundred and sixty-eight thousand, um, so the last two.
Yeah, the, the majority of it for, for buses, for an example, are already picked up. So the notes over there to the right, that they're already captured in the above financials. When, at the end of the day, if our budget is, I'd be doing, if we were completely on budget, there were no savings, that one point nine wasn't recognized. I'd be doing journal entries, um, to adjust the budget for the bus. Right now, we have a requisition out there encumbered under the encumbrance, the sixteen point five eight three million. That picks up the bus expenditure already. So I'm just acknowledging that the one point nine million already captures that.
Yeah, I'm just, so if, if the top three are in that one point nine.
School choice hasn't been touched yet.
Right. So, but that and the last two are only six hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. But there's an eight hundred thousand dollar difference between those numbers, right?
It's the, the, the five hundred and seven, five hundred and seven thousand plus eighty thousand plus twenty-seven thousand. Should, all that would net out.
The six hundred and seven thousand.
So basically, the, the school choice was six hundred and one thousand and a thirty-seven thousand and a small amount of the, um, or a hundred and something, a hundred and thirty thousand of the international tuition is already picked up in encumbrances.
Oh, oh, I didn't, I didn't read this. Okay. So you, not all, when it said, I, I'm sorry, when I looked at it, I didn't see that was only partial of, of those picked up. Okay, that's right.
Makes sense.
Yeah, now I got it. Sorry.
Okay. Any, any other questions from Chris? Anything else you wanted to address, Chris?
No, thank you.
So I think, um, Jim, I don't know if we had a motion on this to approve the requested fund transfers. Um, it feels to me like it'd be appropriate to get a vote on that.
Nope, I agree. That's why I put it on as, um, a date and budget transfers.
Okay. So is there a, a motion to approve the fund, um, transfers as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Hearing none, motion passes for nothing. Thank you, Chris. All right. Uh, next item on the agenda is Mike, Assistant Superintendent's report. And you're gonna give us a data dive of some sort.
I am going to. I just wanna share my screen here. Our favorite software system, by the way. This is Open Architect.
So, um, what, what I wanted to spend some time with today is to, uh, share with you just some general data. Um, and my hope is that today we'll focus on our iReady. Last, last time we were together, I, I chatted with you all about the fact that this is, this year is the first time that we're actually utilizing a common assessment point for students in K through eight. We have adopted, um, iReady software, which allows us to do a comprehensive diagnostic assessment in both math and ELA for all students, um, K to eight. Uh, what you aren't going to see today is data for K, um, because they do not necessarily take the fall data. They don't take it in the fall. They're not ready to take a, a computer diagnostic in the fall. Um, but what we will be able to do is see their, their growth from, from winter to spring and then ultimately from their spring to fall of next year when they're in first grade. But we'll focus today on, on really grades one through eight. Uh, what this diagnostic does, it really allows for our staff to understand where the students are. And they've been using this data specifically at Warren and Mindez as we developed our brand-new, um, data teams to, to really give some, uh, pointed interventions for students who are struggling in certain areas. Uh, what I'm sharing with you today is a, a more generalized data set, uh, that talks about the diff, the, the school, uh, the district as a, as a whole. Uh, we can look at it as a school and we can look at it as a grade level. As a team of educators, we, we can get even more granular in this and we can look at this student. As a team of educators, we we can get even more granular in this and we can look at this student by student by student. Um, by nature of this report, which is in in, you know, my, what I'm talking about today, we're not going to be talking about specific student data, obviously, because of the confidentiality piece. But we are able to to essentially analyze how each one of our students is doing in in four basic areas when it comes to math and and then in ELA, um, there there are significantly, there are a few more areas. So when we look at um ELA, I'm going to start there. And looking at it district wide, what you can notice is that in the fall, we had uh just over sixteen hundred students uh take our I Ready assessment. And essentially, when I look at this data, what I'm trying to determine is what is, what is our difference between blue and red? And that's one of those really quick eye catching things that we can see. So students who are falling in that red and light lighter red category are students who in the beginning of the year were were uh testing below their grade level. Uh, and the way this test works is that they they, as as students answer questions, it gets more challenging for them. If they get the questions correct, it will get more challenging and more challenging. It's a, it's a software that's, you know, pretty, pretty intuitive and it it allows for it to get either a little bit easier or a little bit more challenging based how the student succeeds. And then it will determine what their what their grade level equivalent is. So as of the fall, um, the students, you know, one through eight, uh, who were tested, only forty seven percent of our students were averaging on or above grade level um for our ELA.
So does that mean if I'm a sixth grader or look sixth sixth grade cohort, when you look at them in September, half of them are already grade level, grade level forty seven percent?
Yep.
The rest of them are not, but are you measuring against where they should be at the end of the year already?
Yes, yes, they're me- measuring where they should be at that given time.
Okay.
With 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 the growth towards the end of the year. So one of the things that we want to see is what their growth measurement ultimately will be as well. So they they're they're essentially measured against the national norm um in in where they are at that moment, if they're on grade level or not. Uh, the students that would be above grade level have reached the point at that point where they have gone towards the end of the that sixth grade.
So let me just, I want to make sure I understand that. So does this mean that forty seven percent, forty seven point one percent are below grade level for, if you did this on September first, they're below where they should be on September first? Or is it that they are below grade level for where they should be on the last day of the school year, for example?
Yeah, below where they should be for the last day of the school year. Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so yeah, so that for that forty seven point one percent being on or above is end of year benchmarks.
Correct, yeah.
But measured at the beginning of the year.
But measured at the beginning of the year.
Yeah, if I, I'm sorry if I didn't say, I wanted to make sure that we talked still though about the fact that they're they're showing you your potential growth as well, which is really important.
Yeah.
Okay, so 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 if if they are on track, they'd be on if they are on track to to reach that?
Yeah, so that's a, that's a different, that's a different thing that we see. But yeah, so each individualized student gets a growth plan that they can, that they'll get from this. So if a student, for instance, was um this exact breakdown that you see in the bottom, uh, was.
And and maybe maybe it'd be helpful, because when I looked at it earlier, three plus below, two below, one below, early on, those meant literally nothing to me, because what is early on?
So three plus below means three grade levels below.
Okay.
Okay, two grade levels below, one grade level below, early on in the grade level, right there, okay? Or mid to above. So really, what you expect is our students in the beginning of the year to be early on or mid to above, right? So our early on kids are really right where they need to be. Our mid to above kids in the fall are are a little bit ahead of the game, okay? If they're one grade level below, no, that's that's not, that's not a terrible place to be either in the fall, okay? But we want to, we want to make sure that those kids have a full years of growth and we can measure that with this.
So I thought I Ready was kind of a a point in time assessment. So like if they tested in September, they're looking at where they should be at like grade, you know, six point one, like six, grade six, first month, grade six, second. And and is my understanding of that incorrect? Because I thought that they they were kind of like, they were looking, if they were tested in September, they were normed against where they should be in September of sixth grade versus what they should learn by the end of September.
Yeah, well, that's, well, that's why they they give you that mid or above, because some of our kids are testing to the above point. Because when you, well, that's why I wanted to explain in the beginning that once you get more questions right, they continue to test you and and that will take you to that above grade level. So each student is tested differently.
Level are below where they should be in the beginning of sixth grade.
Correct.
Not, they're not looking at where they are in sixth grade and saying, if you're, if you're still here in June, you're going to be below grade level. But right now, in September of sixth grade, you're below, you're below where we expected you to be.
Right, right, yeah. Yeah, maybe I'm not doing a very good job explaining.
No, you're doing fine.
Because somebody said they look at different, they look at it, so many different assessments look at it differently.
But the 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 most important thing to understand is that we want everybody at in the spring to be on or or mid to above, right? We want, that's why I want to really focus on like students that are in red right now at the beginning and then watch how that changes in our breakdown when we look to the winter just to show ultimate growth already in this short period of time for our students. So you can see, you can just see the change. So if you look at, for instance, comprehension and informational text, which is a breakdown, all right? In the beginning of the year, thirty percent of our students were either two grade levels or three grade levels below. Now, in the winter, that number has gone down from thirty to twenty two. And the number that has increased in that area is twenty six and sixteen, um, where our students that were mid or above to early on. And now you see in the winter, comprehension informational text is thirty six and eighteen. So there's some significant growth that is occurring district wide for our students. And we went from sixty one, we we went to sixty one percent of our students who are now considered on or above where they should be. And in the fall, it was only forty seven point one percent for our for our district. Uh, and this is, I just really basically want to show you that this is great growth that is happening and we're able to measure this um throughout the year. Now, what we like about this tool is it can tell us where our biggest challenges are. So if you look in the winter already, we we have made significant progress in things like high frequency words, right? Sixty four percent plus twelve percent, right? My quick math says seventy six percent of our students are on or above grade level. That's great, because in the in the beginning of the year, that was only fifty five percent. So we've really seen some significant growth there. And if we get down to the grade levels, why, okay? Well, obviously, there's going to be significant growth there in grade one, right? In grade one, you notice, now I can just, I can just make it only grade one students. Grade one students, a hundred and sixty eight of our students were tested, where thirty four point five percent of the students were on or above. Now, in the winter, we've got sixty two point six, and you can see the real difference there in the high frequency words. So they're they're getting there. Um, we we talk a lot about phonics here, right? This is one of the things that we're focusing on. This is something that we have to focus on. We've spent a lot of time with that in terms of our foundations work and our work with Hegarty. Uh, you can see the growth here. In the fall, in phonics, our first graders, only forty five percent were testing on or above grade level. Three percent of our student population was two grade levels below. Well, in the winter, in phonics, there's a significant increase. Uh, it's still three percent are 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 two grade levels below, but look at the difference in our students who are on or above. Uh, it go, it rose to sixty eight percent. So that's something to be celebrated in terms of our, in terms of our first grade population.
And this is one of the data points that the data teams are using too for both literacy and math.
That's right. And what they're doing is they're, they're taking it more granular and they're actually looking at the student in particular and saying, all right, this student uh did test below grade level. Let's look at which exact breakdown by domain that this student actually actually need work in. So if we determine that the student was below in vocabulary, we're going to target vocabulary for that particular student. So just just continuing, that was a quick look at first grade. Uh, you can see the significant increase from the fall to winter. I want to just be able to show you grade two. Um, grade two, again, thirty four point one percent. Uh, and, you know, phonological awareness, take a look at phonological awareness right there. Uh, eighty eighty four percent of our students were were two grade levels below in grade two when they were tested in the fall, okay? In the winter, it's it's now seventy three percent. So it's it's obviously not where we want to be, but there's some growth there, right? So we we've we've dropped that number um by eleven percent. But we know that in grade two, that's where we need to be focusing right now. So it allows our teachers to say, we're going to spend some significant time on phonological awareness at the grade two level because we we need to ensure that our students are showing significant improvement.
But what an affirmation of the programming you have brought on, right? Because the kids who have had more time with that program, they're doing great with this skill.
Correct.
Right, this is the grade that hasn't had as much time with the Hegarty and the other programs.
That's right. Our our first graders have, our first graders have. So but what do we know? We've got to really hone in on that. Now, just phonics is a little bit of a different story, right? Phonics, we have, we have about forty, there were, there were about forty six percent of students who are on or above grade level in the fall. And in the winter, that increased to sixty five percent. Okay, so, but then when you get to the phonological awareness, it's a different piece, as you know, I mean, it's a different aspect of it. We've talked about that. Um, but just, again, really great data to see. And and when you look at third grade now, we've implemented, um, we've implemented uh foundations at the third grade level this year for the for the first time, but those kids had it in second grade, but we now implemented it in the third grade. So you might see some differences in third and fourth grade as we look at this data. So in the fall, again, uh, twenty five, twenty three percent of our students uh were phonics, were mid to above. Where now, in the winter, it's it's up to thirty three percent. Okay, thirty three, so there's there's a, there's an increase there. Uh, we still need to do some better jo- a better job in our high frequency words. That's a place where we're where we're challenged. And this is helping us to get there. So now we know we can hone in on those high frequency words with our third grade students.
Can I, can I ask you just a pause for a sec?
Yep.
So on the top of this page, right, there's the three periods, fall, winter, spring?
Yes.
Is there a direct correlation between what you're seeing in the spring and then what you're seeing? So cohort goes through this assessment in the spring, say, second grade, right? When you do it again in September, for that cohort that's now third grade?
Right.
What what's the sort of correlation where you see like the red bar here? Because what what this is telling me is that the high frequency words, well, we have, whatever we did the year before didn't get them where they need to be, right?
Yeah, and and so we have not been using this one through eight until this year. So now that we are truly going to be one through eight, I feel like we'll be able to better answer that question to follow cohorts. Um, we had only been, we'd only been utilizing the assessment data three through five. So we were able to track them for a certain number of years. And we have found that uh the the fourth and fifth grade data would very much correlate to how our students were doing on the MCAS. Uh, but we still weren't able to truly figure out what that fifth grade data meant for sixth grade because we weren't doing it. So I I I hope that next year, when you ask me that same question, I can say, well, yeah, here we just tracked it. We saw how they did in the spring and now we know, um, but.
That's also sort of going back and saying, okay, this is where the kids are coming in at whatever point.
Right.
I don't know what year we have on the board anymore. That means that we didn't do something right for the year or two before that. And obviously, we we now know that information.
We now know, we now know that we have to spend more time. And 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 that's, these are the conversations in particular, right, at Warren. Um, they have such a focus right now on small group instruction. They they have made it a point to change the way we are instructing our students. And they are giving pointed uh interventions for our for for our kids who are struggling in these in these areas. Well, if this is a particular um place where students need work, that's where we're going to hit. And and that those changes now being implemented at the third, fourth, and fifth grade level as well. I mean, I want to, you know, say that Jenna's doing a great job in in changing that culture of of small group. And I think Kate has a huge say in this as well, right? Kate helped bring this over to Warren, and now she's bringing it over to Mendez in terms of seeing more small group in these data teams where teachers are sitting and looking at this and and making adjustments to practice because they know that this is what our kids need.
I have to follow up on what you were saying. The other thing it might tell you is that, hey, if these sixth graders aren't coming in at this point, but now when we have the data on the fifth graders, they're not showing the same same issue.
Right.
Uh, it might say, hey, the changes we've made, you know, had an effect because, you know, previously, there was obviously an issue that trickled up to the to the next grade. But maybe the data shows now that they're on or above or 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 where they need to be. And that says, hey, the change, now we didn't need to wait. We can say, hey, this issue was in that upper grade. Now these students don't seem to be having that same same gap in that same area.
Yeah, I just had a question. Um, I'm sorry to cut you off. Um, on the, on the, on the flip side of this, I'm just curious, and this is wonderful, because I love these things.
I will just, not to interrupt you, when Mike sent this out, I emailed him back saying, I think you got a lot of deep da- diver, uh, data divers on the school committee. Everybody's going to love this, so.
Yeah, no, it's wonderful. So and kudos that even a third of the, you know, middle schools starting the year mid or above. So as you disaggregate the data, are you also looking at enrichment opportunities for the kids who are? Because you you don't have the, are they one grade above or two, or do you have that? Or I'm just curious on the flip side of it, like, how are we further, you know, growing that opportunity?
Yeah, and so that's where I'll commend the the middle school in particular, because they are the ones that are the 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 most ahead of the curve right now in terms of our individualized student success plan work that they've been doing, the ISSPs that we're talking about.
Okay.
Um, and and they're looking at this to say, okay, we've got students who need to be challenged a little bit more and we've got to make sure we're getting there. This does actually, this this, you know, when when we get down to the student level, it shows us where the students are in particular and and um how much above they are in specific domains, right? So we get to say, well, a student may be scoring on or above in math, but wow, they really are killing it in geometry, right? So we've got to make sure when we get to our geometry unit or we get to that particular unit, we're we're giving them some work that allows them to get themselves to the next level.
Okay.
And and I do know that uh the middle school in particular has has done things like that for certain students when when the time comes, particularly in in terms of um some some independent projects and some independent work that they can do um in in just differentiated assignments for students that need a bigger challenge.
Okay.
One of the things I also want to bring to your attention, though, like, when when we look at this data, because I I want you to dive in and I want you to come prepared to questions and email me questions, and this is one of the reasons I wanted to share this with you um first for for a little brief point and then and then go over it, rather than give it to you like two weeks ago and then come in and be able to talk. There are going to be certain times where you notice, wow, one hundred percent of students are listed as uh below grade level. Like, for instance, on um sixth grade ELA, high frequency words, well, it's not something that they were looking at. So it just comes out as that, because then you look in the winter, I mean, in the in the fall, and then in the winter, it disappeared, okay? So I'm not sure why that's a glitch in the system, but don't think that our stu-, none of our students, not what.
So they just didn't take that piece of the I Ready assessment?
Yeah, didn't take that piece, and for some reason it showed up there. So I I don't want you to think that one hundred percent of our students were failing in that area, on that specific subject.
Growth anomalies are, you know, obviously.
Growth anomalies, right?
Something's, something's terribly wrong and it's probably data.
So, you know, I that was the ELA, um, a quick, quick look at some of the math stuff as well. Uh, obviously, we we talked about this math. It looks at only four domains, algebra, algebraic thinking, geometry, measurement and data, and number and operations. Uh, one of the things that was really interesting was the other day, um, when we were having a conversation with our vertical math team, we were talking a lot about our, some typical struggles uh with measurement and data with our students specifically on MCAS. Uh, and and you see that, you know, for for our sixth graders, um, in the fall, we only had, uh, you know, thirty five percent of our students were mid or above, seventeen percent were on. Uh, we've, we had twenty one percent of our students falling either two or three grades below. Uh, and then in the winter, uh, it was significantly better. So it it it's good data to look at because it's showing me that I know our teachers are spending time and energy to ensure that our students are improving in that area. They've, they've, they've worked hard on that. They've discovered that that is one of our improvement areas. Well, that jump right there alone shows that what they're doing is working. And it's it's nice for them to be able to visually see that. And when we talk about it in our in our vertical teams, they go back to their team and say, look at, it's, what we're doing is working right now.
Now, do all students straight across the board take it? Or is it just selected classes that are doing I Ready or every, it's everybody?
It's for every student. So you can see for sixth grade, two hundred and ten students took it.
Oh, I didn't even notice that. I'm sorry, thanks.
Two hundred, no, there there are some students who have not taken it, or some students that don't, uh, for particular reasons. Um, you know, one of, one of the things that I am going to point out to you, uh, we Um, you know, one, one of the things that I am going to point out to you, uh, when, when, when we talk about all of our students, is if I come off of sixth grade and go back, the one big weakness that I'm seeing in I-ready in general is, uh, it's a very language-rich assessment. And it's very difficult for our English learning students to, to perform well on this test. It's a weakness of it. Uh, so you'll notice that when I click on our EL students, the numbers, the numbers go way down, right? We, we had a hundred students that are EL district-wide that took it, and only ten percent were on or above. These are things though, that we know. We, we know that right now, we've got to figure out what to do to better serve our English learner population when it comes to MCAS. We also know that the best way to measure student success for EL is through the access test.
Right, I was just gonna say, I would assume there's other.
And we have a dashboard on this for our access test as well. And you know that it's part of our, of part of our goals in our school and, in our new, our new, um, strategic plan, we're focusing on access when it comes to our English learners. But we still have to look at this and understand that there are specific areas where our students are really struggling. And why isn't there a percentage of growth that's higher for, for our English learners? Like that would match the percentage of growth that's happening for our, for our students who, who don't speak a second language. So I, I did want to point that out. That's an area that we're looking at and talking about. We can also disaggregate this, uh, by ethnicity. We can disaggregate the data by, um, special ed status. Um, we can look at a whole school rather than the whole district, or just one grade level at a time. But it's, it's in general, it, it shows, it shows some real growth, um, across the board in, in all areas. As you can see in math here, um, sixty, just under seventeen hundred students were tested in the fall, thirty-seven point four on or above in the winter, and math, fifty-six percent of students. But really that, that growth that we see in algebra and algebraic thinking is impressive, um, as is the, the growth in measurement and data. And I know that our teachers have spent significant time talking about that. So I, I'm not sure if there are any other things that you want to see. I'm happy to, to, to take you through some specific things.
So is this, yeah, I know you sent us, you know, kind of a dashboard that we'll have access to. Is this what ours? I haven't had the opportunity to log into yet.
This is your dashboard. So the dashboard that I, we, again, we worked with Open Architects and we said we want to give school committee, um, the ability to be able to get reports on air and also be able to look at it themselves without, without breaking any confidentiality. So they created a school committee-specific dashboard that, that only you, Jim and I have access to. Uh, and, and it doesn't include any specific student data.
And so it's just for the I-ready and the DIBELS data?
Yes, but eventually it's going to include more. Eventually, um, it will include our ST math data, uh, as well as our Teaching Strategies Gold data. So Teaching Strategies Gold is the assessment tool we use at the pre-K level. Um, so that will be on here, and ST math is that new program that we're utilizing at, at Warren. And it will also, um, next year, hopefully, if the grant gets approved, be utilized at the Mendez as well. They knew that right now, the, the, the most significant data sets that we have are these two. Uh, so that's what they did that for us first. There's, there's other, there's other dashboards, um, that are, that are pretty impressive and, and I, I feel like I can show it on a small screen, cause you can't see the students' names on this when it's like this. But essentially, this one here, uh, My Student Explorer is going to be the dashboard that sort of changes the way we do things here in Ashland. So ultimately, what this is going to be is an ISSP at our fingertips for every single student. So if I were to pull this up right now, you would see, um, student names with their scores for all of the different tests that they've took. So it would have access, it would have MCAS, it would have all I-ready data. Uh, at the middle school level, it would have their IXL data that they're utilizing right now as an assessment measure. It would have DIBELS, everything that they've done. And, you know, specifically, I'm excited when, once our current Warren students, you know, become middle schoolers, because we'll just have a plethora of information to really watch their growth progress over time, and we'll have it in front of them. And anything that we want to, you know, hone in on will be there. We have a, we have a student attendance data as well that, you know, when you asked me, uh, recently for which day was, was the day where we were out the most. You can look it up in, in, in seconds, uh, to be able to, to find that information for you.
I was just gonna ask, will you, I know, like, when I sit through parent-teacher conferences, they hand me the I-ready assessment. Will the, like, individual dashboard that informs the I-SSP, did I say that right? Will that be handed? Cause I know as a parent of a younger child, there's a lot of home, sometimes intervention as well on what to work on. I know I did a lot of spelling in the last few years, so I just feel like that would be great data to have, especially for the younger kids where, you know, you can influence more.
My hope is that we get there eventually.
Yeah.
Um, right now, we're not ready to be there yet, because those, those are just, we're still, we're still in that phase right now where the majority of the folks that have access to this are the folks that are, um, are in leadership positions or, um, you know, department head positions. Uh, we haven't given full access to teachers other than during data team meeting times yet. Because it's not, it's not fully equipped with everything that we need.
Okay.
Uh, we're still working with the Open Architects team to make sure it has all of the stuff that we want on it. But this particular one that I'm sharing with you is, 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 is done.
Yep, okay.
And our, our teachers are using that when they get together for their assessment meetings, their data team meetings.
Okay.
Mike, how many other, if you know, approximately how many other districts are using a tool like this? Is this a relatively new, new item?
So I don't know how many districts are using it. I know that they're growing faster and faster. Um, what, what they started with, and I think I told you this, uh, maybe last year, a couple of years ago, when I got introduced to them, is they were, they were doing free dashboards for every town in Massachusetts for MCAS. So that's what sort of got me hooked. Like, oh, I look at this MCAS dashboard, and then they get you in and we, and we decided to become full partners with them. Uh, but, you know, I was doing our, our year two, three mentor program today that we work with Milton, uh, Milford and, and Mendon Upton, and they both use it, you know, the same way we do. Uh, and it's been great because we bounce ideas off of each other. And the reason I knew that they could do a school committee report is because one of those folks does the same thing. And, and also Pete, uh, at Warren, oh, he's, he's working with that S-three group that we've talked about, on the MTSS. And they have given us some specific information about how districts that they're working with are utilizing this tool to help with the MTSS work to make it easier. So that really has driven that My Student Explorer page that we're using. So we're, we're, we're having them model ours based on what other districts that, that S-three works with, how they model their dashboard.
One of the things that, that's, I'm thinking about sort of down the road, cause I don't think we're there yet in terms of how we're using it, but to me, you know, I think we struggle to communicate our successes to our student community and, and maybe our parent community as well. And this is, is a tool that when you have some comparative data, better longitudinal data, to be able to show parents or show the community the success the district is having in identifying where kids are at first grade and ha- and see how they progress on these multiple, you know, standards or whatever the terminology is there over time, and seeing the pink shrink and the blue expand. Um, I think would be a, a great confidence builder to parents to understand that we do know what we're doing, that, that everything is, is really now calibrated much more to the individual student. How that's being shown. And I think to me, that, that is at some point, a state-of-the-schools type of program, um, around presentation of this kind of data. I, I think it's too new. Like, I think you're, you know, if you haven't rolled it out to teachers to be looking at it at a granular level, we're not there yet.
Right.
Um, and so I understand it takes time, but I think this is a phenomenal tool to be, to look at and be working with.
Yeah, in, in such, you kind of gave the segue of talking about specific things. I mean, looking at in particular, the math data at Warren, you know, eighteen percent, so eighteen percent of students in the fall were on or above. And I alluded to this last, last time, eighteen to forty-three point eight. That's a, that's a pretty impressive number. That growth number is, is, is really great. And when you think about what they've spent the majority of their time on in the first few months of school, it's, it's where we see this increase in the blue and the algebra and algebraic thinking and the numbers and operations. That's what we're focusing on there. Right? So that's, that's impressive work that's happening at, at, at the grade one and two level. And I, I really, not that I should, not that we should harp on those particular students right now, but tho- those are the kids though that we're, we're really looking at because that, those are our, I want, you know, our post-pandemic kids right now who did spend so much time in their very early childhood, being away from any socialization, right? Those first graders, they, they were like one, two years old when this whole thing was happening, right? So how are they doing and how are they adapting? Well, they're adapting pretty well. And, and they're doing a pretty good job, and they're showing some real growth that they should show once they, once they get to school. So it's, it's, it's exciting for us to see that.
So the other piece in terms of the data is I know, you know, Jen Cutler has talked about some of the tools she uses. Are those things that are also tracked in Open Architects as well, or, or, or will be potentially added to it?
Yeah, so I, I thank you for pointing that out. Um, that is another one of the areas, a domain that we're going to be adding to the My Student Explorer. Uh, and, and probably to the combined assessment is, is all Jen's data. Yeah, that's gonna be, uh, it may, it will probably be a completely separate dashboard, which will be our SEL dashboard. Uh, but it will be included in the My Student Explorer data when we pull up everything because that, that is comprehensive.
Anybody else? Then we start playing with you have a hundred more questions.
But that's, I'm glad, and I want you to, you know, ask, come, come with questions for my reports that I would do. And I want to be able to talk about this and pull this up. Now that this really is very usable from, from, from my vantage point, I can get things for you pretty easily in terms of.
Just a thinking aloud kind of thing. If we all have the opportunity to play with this, right, and Lori does too, it may be something that even, you know, is driving budget requests, right? And so maybe one of those things that we spend more time with you and showing, you know, this is what it's showing, this is the support I want to put in place. This is something that I want to make sure is prioritized. And, you know, we, we've done all of the work on the strategic plan over the last two years, right? And as you're implementing that, this gives you an ability to say, okay, this is something we need to target, and you have a, an idea of how to do that.
Sure.
Um, I think that would just be another time, time for us to potentially check in on it and have another, you know, deep dive into it as people may want.
And, and know that, um, we're, we'll get prepared to present the DIBELS data to you as well. I just want to be able to have Kathy here uh, to be able to do that as well as probably, probably Pete and maybe even Erica at that point. Uh, because it's really primarily at the Warren School, obviously, where we're, where we're doing that. But next time, next report I give, we will focus on DIBELS.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, anybody else? All right.
No, thanks, man.
Yeah, that's fantastic. Uh, next item on the agenda, superintendent's update.
I've got nothing.
I was gonna say, there's no way you're gonna follow that, so, you know.
Nope.
All right, Paul Warren approvals?
Uh, between February twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-four and March thirteenth, twenty-twenty-four, I, Paul Kendall, authorized by my signature, payables in the amount of two hundred thirty-four thousand, six hundred dollars and eighty-six cents. This includes general fund expenses of one hundred seventy-six thousand, five hundred thirty dollars and thirty-four cents, revolving expenses fifty-two thousand, two hundred and three dollars and twenty-seven cents, and grant expenses of five thousand eight hundred sixty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents. And ma- maybe it's, it's a good time. The reason we do this is we used to have, have warrants here and we all had to sign the warrants. Um, and what, about five years ago now, or five or six years ago, there was a useful efficiency act.
Mass Modernization Act.
Something like that that allowed us to, um, uh, to authorize a single member to do it. And so that's, uh, so we do that, so it just streamlines it, so I got tagged with it.
You're around, you said you'd do it. And thank you. Um, next item, gifts and donations, Jim?
Yes, we've got a couple. Uh, plan AID, uh, two hundred seventy-seven dollars, ninety cents, general gifts and donations. Uh, and Special Olympics of Massachusetts, uh, five hundred dollars for the Warren School Unified Sports. So a total of seven hundred seventy-seven dollars and ninety cents.
Do you have a motion to accept the gifts and donations?
So moved?
Okay, and that was as presented, correct?
As presented, yes, thank you, so.
Thank you, Tina. Do you have a second?
Second.
Marcy, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Both passes for nothing. Uh, minutes, let's do these two separate things. Um, anybody have anything on the minutes of February fourteenth?
I wasn't there.
You, you wasn't there, okay. Paul and Marcy, no? All right, is our motion to approve the minutes of February fourteen, twenty-twenty-four as presented?
I guess I'll, I'll, I'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
You can still make a motion.
All in favor, aye. Aye.
Aye.
And Tina?
Yeah.
Um, and any opposed? Passes for nothing. February twenty-eighth? All right, can you get a motion to approve those as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Nay. Passes for nothing. Uh, any member updates? Anybody got anything?
I feel like there's a couple of things. I'll remember, maybe if I look at my calendar. I did go to, uh, the high school production of Chicago. That was, that was really good. Went to a band concert. I feel like there's something else meant to be.
The middle school also had their theater production too.
Yeah. Uh, the band actually played, uh, it was a middle school band. They actually played in the middle school auditorium, which was an interesting, more.
Squished in?
Called the Little Theater.
What they, what they did is they just staggered it, you know, uh, I think we did the same thing during, during COVID where it's like, hey, you show up this time, you leave, o- you know, only if you have a, a student in a different grade. And so they kind of did it in shifts, and so it wasn't, it, it was, it was comfortable. Kind of, it's different, it's a different feel, so that, that was interesting. And I wanted to think I'm forgetting something else that I wanted to bring up, but.
Yeah, no, similar. I did pretty much the same things as Paul.
Yeah, I'll just say, even though it really was not school committee hat on, I spent a lot of time in wrestling gyms. I can tell you they're smelly. All right, uh, any action items people have for future agendas? Okay, if there's something, pass it along to, to me or Lori. And our last item on the agenda is an executive session, so I will make the motion on this. Um, move to enter executive session under section twenty-one A-three to conduct strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation, litigating position of the po- of the body, excuse me, and the chair so declares, and not to return to open session, we will be discussing the Ashland Educators Association ESP Bargaining Unit. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, be a roll call vote. Marcy?
Aye.
Tina?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And I, for me, we are, um, moving into executive session. Thank you.
Not to return to open session.
Not to return to open session.
You guys mind if I head out to the band concert?
Is it Cal?
Have the opportunity to chat.
Yeah.
So he kind of filled me in and it all works for me.
Okay. All right, thanks, Tina. Is this, is this Alex or?
It's both of them.
Both of them, okay.